Yeah, it's five o'clock. I called a regular scheduled meeting of the Hartford City Council to order this time. We'll have a word of prayer to start off with. Well, again, we thank you for every day of life that you give to us. Thank you for the opportunity to serve. We just pray for your guidance as we make decisions tonight that would benefit the citizens of Hartford. And I would just thank you for the blessings that we enjoy each day and just keep us mindful of those. We pray these things in your name. Amen. All right. Next on our agenda is visitors. Are there visitors that would like to speak to us tonight? Go ahead. Can you give me your name?
Eileen Morris.
Okay.
And what I'm presenting today is there's an alley on a piece of property.
I have that on the agenda for new business tonight. Can you wait till then?
Yeah, you can wait.
Wait till then for me considering. I was gonna present your case before tonight. Yes. Okay, I didn't recognize you, I'm sorry. You wanna talk to us?
If you want me to be a visitor, I will. I think that we had spoke earlier about trailer, travel trailers that we were talking about over on the Neil Renfro.
Yeah.
So I don't know if you all had discussed that any longer about that being there in the city limits, which I, you know, is against the regulations.
Okay.
So.
Are we wait till after the board meets to make a decision on his appeal to the board?
Did he write anything? Yeah, I haven't heard anything else from him.
I told him to send you a letter asking to be on the agenda for your meeting.
Well, that meeting will be the fourteenth.
That's what I told him.
And I told him he probably wanted to talk to you all, maybe even before me and our board, because my board's gonna read the ordinance to him, which I have a copy of that here, which states, you know, you cannot just pull one into the city limits and hook it up to your city utilities, which is what they're driving, but there's circumstances, it's not well.
Right. What she's referring to is Neil Renfro, of course, has had some surgery and he's still recuperating from health issues. And while he's not able to pastor his church, he's, uh, their nomination has evangelists that comes around to fill in the pastor's role while somebody's incapacitated. And they've invited this evangelist come in, he has, they all come in in travel trailers, and they have it hooked up to their fellowship hall. And it's been there probably for, I'm gonna guess it's been there for a month, probably.
I didn't know it'd been there that long.
I think it's been there for quite a while. It's longer than two weeks.
What's new for you?
The location's on Church Street. I can't tell you the exact number there. And so, um, what he's asked is for some kind of allowance, variance concession while he's recuperating for that evangelist trailer to remain there. If it doesn't, then that evangelist trailer will have to go out to the county park and have to stay out there during the duration of the time until Neil recuperaes. We've talked quite a bit. There was some question about the time. She didn't have a problem with maybe leaving it there for two weeks, which is longer than they normally allow trailers to stay. But you can hold up.
Well, I was just gonna hand this to you, Mike, and address them. Okay, I put a section there, I brought the section along, more showing that I can't do anything about it, because you know what if I could?
Right.
But your ordinance is not gonna allow it.
Right.
And I've already had people remove those trailers.
Yeah.
Um, numerous times.
And there are other reasons why people would do that, like ill parents, parents, you know, that need to move in next door or somebody keep an eye on them, or people move in next to their parents where they keep an eye on them, things like that.
Now, that what you're referring to right there is, is, uh, it's allowed under what you would call conditional use, and that's where a trailer set up with its own utilities, you have to have its own tab, it has to have everything, which these do not.
Right.
Uh, and those are allowed yearly with a doctor's excuse, and they have to come in and reapply or anything to me. So it's totally different than this.
But he needs to know because the new church that they're building, they're gonna have it in plans to have these trailer hookups in that building, you know? So he needs to know, so.
There you go.
The trailer have to move out to the park, I'm sure, but, uh, he was gonna try to apply to the board for some type of, uh, concession in the rules or have a rule change, you know, is what he was asking for. So he's gonna ask for it. That's what Casey's gonna plead. But anyway, uh, if he's gotta go out, he knows if he doesn't get that, he has to go out to the park, you know, like all the other travel trailers. So that's where we are right now, so you wanna go ahead?
Yeah, I was gonna make a suggestion. This doesn't fall under the variance, it doesn't fall under conditional use, which is usually what I try to work everything under if possible. And then get a set time on it and say, you know, you're here this long and then you have to comply. Well, on these, I never, never do that with these travel trailers. There's no way, no allowance for them at all. I mean, there's none, because they don't ever, you just don't want it ever to start, because then you can't get a handle on it.
That's right.
And you can't keep the control of it at all. So I don't have anything to offer him, other than the fact that I thought I would talk to the city and see if the city wanted to offer him something with saying he could, which I talked to him, I said, "I'll just let you have two more weeks anyway."
Yeah.
I said, "Let me tell you, I can, I will do that."
But the city rules, it's...
Yeah, and he said, "Well, okay." And then he talked with you and he talked like he just needed a lot more than two weeks and I, he hadn't told me that.
Oh, yeah, he's looking, yeah, he's looking at another surgery, and it may be as much as two months before, so.
He didn't mention that to me.
I do have a question. So has he applied to the board?
Not yet.
There's nothing to apply for. It doesn't fall under any of our regulations.
Well, I mean, with all due respect, though, once you all pass your planning and zoning ordinance and give the authority to the planning board, the city kinda loses jurisdiction to make that decision.
No, because it says it's up to the city. There is no, there is no allowance for that. They'd have to change the regs.
Right, I don't have anything to offer him, is what I'm saying.
Yeah.
But that's why I came here today to see if there's something else that somebody can do. I told him, I said, "Normally, I tell all of these persons, when you come in for a week and you're staying with your mom and dad or something, I'm not gonna turn my eye away from it and not see it." But I said, "When you stay longer than that, then I'm gonna have to administer a move." And I'll tell them to go out to the park. Well, I think that his problem with this is partially, he's paying for this evangelist, I think.
He, he, he's paying for the evangelists and they came forward to pay for the camping. I think the camping has been taken care of, okay? There is a source of funding to provide for the camping fee, so he's not gonna have to cover that.
If he goes out to the park?
If he goes out to the park.
Well, then why would we need to do that?
Because they'd like to get it for nothing.
Well, there's also so many full hookups at the park.
Hookups, what problem is that there?
Well, it would be, uh, all of the sewer hookups are gone.
They are right now?
They're all taken. It would have to be, he'd have to use his camper, the tank, you know, once a week or whatever it was.
Yeah.
Which would be doable, I'm sure.
Sure it is. It's like a vacuum, but.
I'm for wrong. I'm for one, I mean, I sympathize with their problem.
Yeah.
And I understand what they're talking about, but I have to strongly disagree with any motion that we would, we would accept something like that, because we're opening a door that we can't close. I mean, it's like a lot of other things, and that's how we've gotten into trouble before, is, "Well, they've been a long time citizen," and this and that. And I just, you know, I hate to even think that we'll entertain it.
Yeah.
That's why I wanted you all to know that I don't really feel like I have anything to offer him, and I know my board would ask me, and they'd ask me to pull that, which I pulled right here that says no. And, uh, so I thought, well, maybe you all would have some other ideas. But now that I realize he's not gonna have to pay that extra fee for them to sit out there, I think probably he's...
Maybe somebody, somebody else, a benefactor should pay for that.
Yes, I will.
Okay, but I can call Neil tomorrow and just have him to move it, tell him that, uh, you know? Of course, he can still go the fourteenth of the board meeting if he writes the letter and asks to be on the agenda, but, uh, I can go ahead and have him ask, you know, have the evangelists move out there to the park and...
Well, he needs to know too, that even if, if Nancy should approach the board about, or the city council about changing the regulation, you're talking a good six months to get that through the system. I mean, and there's not an easy way to say, "Oh, we're just gonna amend this today."
Yeah.
Which is not something you wanna amend.
No.
You don't want that in anyway.
On the subject of these travel vehicles and everything, I know that the city's been contacted regarding code enforcement, because apparently we do have some others in the city that people are residing in.
Well, I haven't had anybody in them right now. I watch them and they move out of them and then up where you know it, maybe they're back in them and stuff. But yeah, they have to fall under code enforcement, so they have to go out, they have to leave.
They need to go out.
Well, right now, I think, I think the question is, because of the code enforcement under the ordinances of this, you're the administrator under these particular ones. So I guess the question that has been brought to me is, he wants to know, does he need to refer those to you so that you can go and inspect on them?
That, when it comes to enforcement and like that, I'm to, I'm to ask the police department and the code enforcement and all of that stuff, right?
Okay, well, I think there was a little bit of disconnect, I wasn't sure which ones are what.
Right, because normally, just like the last one that I had, it hadn't been that long ago, I wrote them a letter. I always write them a letter before I go to anybody else. And, uh, they got back and touched me quickly and say, "We're not living in it." You know, "We do have lights on in it and stuff." And I said, "If you're just keeping a refrigerator and all like that," I said, "But when you leave it open, with the doors open and the steps down and all that stuff, everybody's gonna assume you're in it."
Yeah.
So I, you know, I worked it that way. So I always send a notice first. And then whenever I would refer it to codes, I would send them the copy of that letter where I'd already notified them. Now, if you want me to do it a different way, I'll just have you tell me.
I think there was just some confusion as to which steps were first and whatnot, so I'll pass that along to him.
Well, that might not be the right step, so you just tell me.
Well, I think, well, we've talked before about looking at some of these ordinances about the enforcement side of things anyway, so you and I need to get together about some other matters.
Which was another thing that I was going to talk about tonight too, as well, is getting into that and me getting ahold of Grad again and Jennifer, I just sent her another notice and she has, she's been in trainings in different places until I can get, you know, get with her. So I sent her a thing that I'm just gonna ask everybody to come on the fourteenth to the next meeting, like at probably six o'clock or something, the judge executive, and just invite everybody, even if they can't come over there for some kind of a speech to get going on about funding, 'cause everyone's gonna have to sign a contract as to what you plan on doing to support the comprehensive plan and the changes.
Is that March fourteenth?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, I'm gonna be out of town, so I need to get with you probably before then.
Well, okay. Well, I don't, I haven't set that down yet, because I just sent her the thing, or I did ask, I was gonna ask you and I'd already asked Paul, and he said if it's tonight, he'd work it in, so I haven't heard from Chase, I haven't got ahold of him or David yet. So I don't have to do the fourteenth. Let's get another day.
Yeah, let's just toss some dates and see what works out for everybody.
Okay, well, then I'll just get with you. Except that's what's my problem, I haven't had it where I've got, where I can get Grad over here at the same time that I can get...
To catch up, I realize we got a new, a new council. This has kind of been something that's a little ongoing, is the city is, you know, our, our ordinances for planning and zoning, including our zoning areas and maps and everything in the city, haven't been updated in several, several years.
Nineteen ninety-one.
Yeah. And there's some significant issues that have arisen because of the changes that we've experienced as accounting. So what we've done is we've invited Grad to come over and give us quotes on how to update and renew our policies.
I'm all about that.
But it comes at a cost, so.
Of course.
Yeah, so that's one of the things that we're trying to get with them, to figure out what, basically, the biggest bang for our buck.
Because at the same time, we're looking at twenty to twenty-five thousand just for comprehensive plan. If you're gonna do enough to get something done, and it's gonna have fallen that twenty at least, but, and that doesn't have anything to do with redoing the ordinance and stuff, which you...
No, I mean, it's gonna be all inclusive to everything.
It's a totally different ballgame.
Yeah, that's gonna...
Okay.
So, but that's what I had to say, so.
Thanks, ma'am.
And is there anything?
Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Okay, did you have any more comments you wanted to make on, on what you're working on with me or with the board or anything, so while I'm here?
Not right now.
Okay.
Has group called you?
I haven't heard from anyone.
Okay, that means they're still in negotiation.
But don't leave us. Ms. Morris, I'll ask you to go ahead and make your presentation, so you'll have sent through all of our meetings tonight. Uh, and she'll need to have some input in it, what you're wanting to propose, so.
What we're wanting to do, on thirteen oh eight Taylor Avenue, thirteen oh six is the property that's connected, and their mobile home burnt. And so, to be able to get another mobile home in and to set it facing Taylor Street, there's supposed to be an alley down through here, which we don't even know where it's at. But we want a petition that we could close that alley, 'cause it's never been used. They said it was for, back in the years, for ice delivery or something like that. But to be able to set that mobile home there, we were asking the city if they could close that alley. Okay?
What she's, what she's got is two properties on both sides of the alley, they on both sides of the alley. And what they're asking is, if we close the alley down to the limit of their property, then they can put that trailer in and have it facing Taylor Street, you know? Uh, it's a hundred and ten feet down through that that we would close. It's an alley, it's like a lot of alleys in town, we don't know that there's an alley there. It's grass, it's been mowed for years, but probably served a purpose in delivering coal or ice at one time. It's not needed anymore. We've closed alleys before. Uh, this one does not require anything more than them paying for this, this property to be deeded over to them. It's not like we've got to divide it and half goes to, to one owner and half goes to another owner, but they would have to pay for the deed, uh, changeover from them.
To be inclusive of that. Leave that out.
The closure would be by operation of law, it would just automatically revert, since it was, it was in place and plotted like that when the city was in law. Sometimes people want deeds, and they don't understand that by operation of law, the city doesn't provide that. So to actually give a deed to the property, that would have to be at a separate expense, but the...
So we just take our responsibility out of it?
Well, in order to do it, you have to pass an ordinance, and you have to give notice and have all adjacent landowners sign off that agree to the closure.
But these, there's only them, there's only adjacent landowners, so.
Yeah, and see, the alley used to run straight across Taylor and going up the hill there.
Yeah.
There are several of these throughout the city, out of all of us, yeah.
Yeah, too. Um, so I would entertain a motion to close the alley and then entertain any discussion regarding that motion, so.
I will say that in the past, anytime we've done alley closures, we always reserve any uneasement along that way for any utilities or city matters that need to be installed either now or in the past or in the future, so.
Well, that's gonna be tough if they got a trailer sitting on it.
Right.
I mean...
Like crossways across the...
We may need to go around the trailer or something like that, it would be to...
I just...
You know what she's saying, that if we ever need to cross that, we'd like to know that you're favorable for us to have an easement across that property somewhere.
I'll make a motion to close the alley. It's huge.
There's no outlet to it either.
I second it.
All right, any discussion regarding the motion?
It does, just to put a note on the file, that the motion itself doesn't actually close the alley, we'll have to do that by ordinance, so I'm gonna go ahead and get that prepared.
It says the motion is to create an ordinance to close it.
Right. Okay, is there any discussion? Okay, all in favor of creating the ordinance, uplifted hand. Thank you, motion's carried unanimously, so we get everything taken care of now. She'll prepare the deed work and lead it over to you with the stipulation that an easement somewhere in there that doesn't affect your...
If you want a deed. It'll be in the ordinance to the city, but if you want a deed, you're welcome to contact my office once it's completed and published.
Well, as long as it's in the city, it shows it's been done, that's fine.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
I will also say that they are replacing this with a single one mobile home and, yes, and that we have talked about this. And because that being a home that burned in December, she came to me after that, and you can replace if it's not been six months. So at this point, and I told her it had to be newer than a two thousand and two, which would have the hood code on it, that would be the only way right now. And so that was all taken care of.
And it needs to be done as quickly as possible, too.
Right, well, we're just waiting for you, okay, there.
Okay.
We gotta lose yourself. Because she came to me soon enough, then, you know, you're automatically working on it at that time. So I wanted everybody to understand, that's why I took that pretty good about it there. So it's better that way, that everybody know ahead of time before it goes in there.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right. We'll be in touch.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other visitors that would like to speak tonight? Okay, go ahead and state your name and tell us, uh, go ahead and tell us what you're...
I'm Mike Leach. I live in Iron Mountain, and the reason I'm here is because I had my water shut off this week without my knowledge for a bill that I didn't know existed, because I got a late fee and wasn't notified, and it was shut off within ten days of the late fee.
Now, can I go ahead and explain what the situation is? They pay by electronic check, and, uh, City Hartford can't accept late payment checks, they have to go to the bank, and the bank has to print a paper check, and then we get the paper check and deposit it. Well, with how we do all that, it's the fifteenth before the money's going into our account. So our computer says this is a late payment. And so that's why we had the problem here. You know, that had happened twice before, but because the former administrations were a little more lenient in what they would allow as far as late, they, they never did show up, and that's why we just now discovered.
Yeah.
Okay, so you go ahead with your presentation.
So it was late. I didn't know that it was late, but, you know, because according to us, we paid it beforehand. Well, anyway, so it's late, uh, a week later, our check gets cashed, so we assume everything's good to go. No notification, you know, that you're short because you've got a late fee associated with this now. Nothing. Now, they did say, they tried to give us a courtesy call, but courtesy call's not a notification, especially if nobody answers or the call doesn't go through. Well, I come home from work, my water's turned off and with a lock on it, it's after four o'clock, I can't call anybody. And as far as I'm aware, I got a bill that has this amount on it and a check that has this amount on it, it's taken care of. That's not a great way to run a public utility. You should never be shutting anyone off for a late fee. When the bill's paid in full, the late fee should just be rolled over to the next month. I mean, I think if you check every other utility in the surrounding area, they will not shut you off for a late fee. As a matter of fact, I work it on you, we won't shut you, we won't roll a truck for less than seventy-five dollars. So, I mean, I understand you guys are much smaller on you, but it's still a bit crazy to shut people off without notifying them over a late fee if they don't exist.
Okay, let me go ahead and, and I'll stand up for Sarah, because Sarah spends, uh, when we do have late fees, she calls people to let them know that they are late, and on the twenty-fifth, we're about to cut them off, she does call people, and the twenty-fourth, and let them know that, you know, today is the last day before we have to shut you off. Uh, we just have to go by the ordinance, and the ordinance would have to be modified by this group or a new ordinance written regarding, uh, you know, the rules as far as, like, see, we expect money to be in by the tenth.
Right.
All right, when the money's not there by the tenth, we give them two weeks with a penalty, and if it hasn't come in during that two-week time, then we shut it off. And that's what the ordinance, the way the ordinance is written.
I think we need to revisit the ordinance as well.
Okay.
Well, I think, I think we've got more than that. We need to also ask...
Because Mr. Leach is not the only one that could... I've had my water shut off without notice.
You do it electronically like he does?
Nope.
Well, then, you know...
Nope. Nope, I just didn't get it.
Oh, well, you were late.
I've been here nine years.
Well, so I've lived here all my life, and they cut mine off, so...
I know, but it's still...
If I could interrupt?
Sure.
I, I work a utility, I've worked a utility for fifteen years. Um, this is the only place I've ever run across this, seen anything like this. I talked to people in billing at multiple places that I've worked at and ones I currently work at, and they were astounded that this is the case. And not only that, I know you guys are not governed by PSC, but if you look at PSC, you're supposed to give five days' written notice, and you're gonna have a hard time justifying that if it was to ever become a big ordeal that you haven't given written notice. Even though you're not governed by them, they're gonna say, "Well, the state requires written notice for a water shut off. Why aren't you guys not doing it?" So I'm just saying, in the future, that might come up, even though you're not technically regulated by them. So that's really all I had for it.
I mean, I've heard stories of people paying all but a dollar in something, because they just didn't do their math right, and it was shut off because it was a dollar. Instead of just rolling that dollar over to the next bill, it's shut off. So I don't agree with that.
Well, I have different opinions.
Well, that's why, that's why there's more than one of us up there.
Yeah.
We have all kinds of circumstances, and they're all different situations. We'll have people who...
Consistently do.
Well...
I understand. The difference between consistency and once in a lifetime and with the same result.
Yeah.
The one comment I'd like to make is, the city does offer ACH.
I signed up for it this morning.
Okay.
I'm good.
And I'd also, I'd also like to let everyone know that when individuals are going online through their banking website and paying payments, the bank accepts no responsibility for the late payment, because that is subbed out to a company. My company will take no responsibility as well for the payment. And really, the only avenue, if you're gonna make sure that that payment's gonna be there by using an online banking, is you have to pay it in advance from anywhere close to that, that due date.
Yeah.
And I see that here, because they come in a different envelope, and there'll be a stack of them. And it's like, those individuals have no idea of what they're risking.
That's right.
Because an ACH is basically the, for the most part, about the same thing as your online banking. And at least if you do an ACH through the city, you do know for sure that there's never gonna be a late fee. And so I just want to, as a public notice, the online banking is very risky for doing something time-sensitive, because no one accepts responsibility for the late payment.
After finding out that was the case, I don't disagree that it was late. I didn't know that's how it was working, and I don't disagree it was late. I don't disagree that there should have been a late fee associated. My main problem is, I was not notified, given any, and I was shut off over sixteen-dollar late fee that I didn't know existed.
And I won't, and I won't say that you weren't notified, but I do know that we have numerous, numerous accounts that the number is not a working number, because often people have disconnected their home phone.
I think you checked, though.
Yeah, just correct.
And I'm not, I'm not talking about you specifically, but for the record, and the people do not just, they get a new cell phone number, you know, the last thing they're gonna do is call City Hartford and say, "Oh, could you change my number on my account?" You know, that just...
With that being said, that is why the Public Service Commission says written notice.[1659.16] With that being said, that is why the Public Service Commission says written notice. And that can be a door hanger, that can be in the mail.
We had a lady shut off, she's away from here, but we tried to call this number and she said, we haven't used that number since nineteen ninety or something like that, you know, so, you know, they tried, they do try. I will say that. All thing that the mayor and the ladies up front can do is follow the ordinance, you know.
That's right.
And that's, it's gotta be this council's decision to, to make adjustments or to make a new ordinance or whatever, so it's up to them, whatever you all want to do, but.
I'd like the opportunity to review the ordinance before I kind of weigh in.
Okay.
I agree.
So, I can get a copy of that. And I, the, of my opinion, I think the, the issue with the timing and the late fee, I think it makes a lot of sense that if the intent was there to pay the bill and the late fee happened after the bill was issued, which it normally does, if it rolls into the next bill, well, then they have to pay the entire next bill, at which time, you know, they still have the good intent.
And if they've paid and you've deprived them of property, that's theft.
So, it's kinda, but I'd like to see the ordinance, see how it's kind of written.
We own the water.
Because if the intent is there to pay.
It is.
And it's a timing issue, you know, at the end of the day, the, the city still receives the, the late fee, the late fee payment, you know, and it's, it's up to the, the consumer to give ample time to, to get the money in. So, it really does still fall on them, but.
So, will you want to just?
I think that if we could get a copy of the ordinance and let everybody study it.
Table it, discuss.
Table it until we, that's right.
That way, we can all be on the same page for what the ordinance is, and we can make our recommendations accurate.
Yeah, I don't wanna say, hey, we need to adjust the ordinance if it's.
Especially if we hadn't read the ordinance all the way through because we just got here, but we're going to.
Okay. Thanks for coming in, Mike. If you can be excused, if you are, you stay and listen to all this, it's gonna take place for the next two and a half hours.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Thank you, ma'am.
I'll be real quick.
You wanna give us your name?
My name is Jody Ashby, former occupant of this seat right here. I just wanted to let you guys know, we're gonna try to be at the, the city council meetings as much as possible. Whenever I say we, I mean, Ohio County Economic Development Alliance, either myself or Chase. And just so that we can stay in tune with what's going on with the cities, we collaborate closely with the Economic Development Committee for Hartford. But if you guys have any ideas, I can update you on what we're currently doing. Just to give you an idea, we have a coding boot camp, in case you're not aware of that, for web developers that OCDA is funding through a grant. We've got eight students in the next cohort that starts next Monday, hoping to develop an avenue for people to work remotely, to work from home or work from the hub or whatever for employers all over the United States and foreign as well. But that's just one thing that we're doing. So, throwing around any ideas for workforce development, for economic development, for tourism, that OCDA might partner with either the EDC or the council or whoever, so I'll leave my contact information with you guys and.
Do you wanna talk about those two grants we've mentioned today then?
Sure, unless you would rather.
Go ahead.
Okay, so, one of the grants that we met about this morning is the Chrome Rubber Grant. It is for waste tire recycling, to promote waste tire recycling. I'm gonna set this down so it stops making noise. And what OCDA is requesting that grant to be used for is to pave the old road bed from sixty-nine into the Ohio County Park. The idea is to tie the city of Hartford and the city of Beaver Dam ultimately into the park and to assist with the Trail Town project. So, part of that certification, Trail Town certification, requires you to tie all of it together with the city so that you can bring people into the downtown areas. That's the whole purpose.
And it's to, to pave the road.
We wanna pave the path.
From out here on fifteen forty-three all the way through or just the other way?
No, no, we're paving the old road bed, it's not a road anymore, between the property of Spinks and who else?
Maddox.
Yes. So, that it's a bike trail. So, it connects, we're gonna connect it to.
Oh, it's not to pave the road, it's a bike trail.
Right. It's the old road bed, we wanna pave it with chrome rubber, what, pour in place chrome rubber, whatever you wanna call it, help me.
It's essentially a rubberized asphalt product.
Yeah. It's not asphalt modified, but it is chrome rubber, it looks like asphalt, things like that. Have you ever been to Smothers Park and it's all the same stuff?
Soft stuff, but this one's a little harder to help with the biking and.
Yeah, it'll have some gravel or.
Give it a more strength and wearability.
So, that's what we're gonna submit for.
I'm not sure that they still know where the, the road is that you're talking about.
Well, if you, I'm not as good with this.
If you leave Wayland and you go on sixty-nine back towards the Ohio County Park.
Right there with the white fence ends.
Where Country Club Lane starts, there's an old road bed that actually runs out next to that fence between the Maddox's farmland and Spinks's property.
Yeah.
And it goes back and actually curves around to the park.
Yeah.
Used to be a gravel road there years ago.
I don't remember that.
Yes. It is an old road bed, yes.
Scoobus used to run it.
So, this stuff you can pour directly on top of gravel, so that's what we're submitting for. We also just tossed around some ideas for the cities to submit for other things and for the park to submit for something, so.
AARP had a grant to.
Yep. So, AARP grant is the Community Challenge Grant. It's more focused on any activity or project that will include intergenerational people. So, if you can tie together the age gaps, then your project is gonna get attention. Also, I haven't researched it yet, but the, the idea is to be a quote-unquote livable community. I don't know what that really means yet, but this grant, they tell us, will be, will get more focus if we include projects that will make us closer to a livable community. So, basically, what they want us to do is, I'll just give you an example idea. Bo and I were talking about at the park, updating the park to include walking trails and equipment that seniors could use so that it's not just a playground for kids, but also includes the older generation too. So, that's just one idea, but that's an example. So, that's two of the grants that we're working on currently, but there's a lot of other things that, that we do at OCDA. The idea is really just to benefit and increase the quality of life for Ohio County period, so it can be a broad range of things. So, if you guys have ideas or anything you wanna discuss with us, let me know and I'll leave you my card. And that's it.
Thank you. Appreciate you being here.
Thank you.
I'm just gonna give this to you, you can pass it to me. There's extras there.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Nancy, if you wanna go, you don't have to say.
I'm just gonna say that I appreciate everything you all do, so thanks for listening to me. And I do wanna, you know, work on a lot of things with you, so as far as the plans for our comprehensive plan and our ordinances and everything and stuff in the maps, they all got to be redone. And I know I'm gonna be right in your face a whole lot, so excuse me. But also, I was wondering if you're, the persons that can help me more, I would like to have an ordinance maybe updated where your workers that go out and read the meters and, and different persons like that when they do see a building going up or they do see someone living in a, a structure that they're not supposed to be in. Right now, we're having a little problems with, I had some little buildings go up in a certain area that person decided to rent out in their backyards.
Yeah.
And you can't do that, you know? So, just things like that, 'cause I'm not gonna see them all the time to know that they're new or not. And some of them that are going in are not new anyway, so you'd think they've been there forever. But I'd appreciate that and I, maybe we can even get an ordinance where we figure out who's responsible, when I'm supposed to be doing it first or somebody else.
I think it needs a complete revamp and overhaul unfortunately at this point, so.
Because I've never really had anybody tell me, so you can tell me when you want it done, I'll do it. Maybe, best I can anyway. So, thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Appreciate you being here.
I'll be calling at the.
All right.
Bye-bye.
Bye-bye. Take a look at your meeting minutes we have to consider. I'll just have one special call. How about, I guess, do we approve the?
January.
Hmm?
I don't believe in January.
Had to fourteen, yeah, yes. All right. You have the special call meeting minutes of January seventeenth there.
The only thing I noticed, didn't we appoint someone to the wastewater treatment plant or, wastewater treatment board?
Yes.
Their name is not on this listing, is it? If it is, I missed it totally.
I think there's the whole, is it, did I leave it out on that long list?
Had we already appointed Jeff on another meeting?
Oh, I thought he was included, I'm sorry.
He might have been appointed at another meeting. I don't know, we'll check back and see.
I'll be double checking so they send him in the prior minutes.
All right.
That makes living at home hard if Jeff is ever.
If we ignored him.
Okay.
I will go check that and make sure.
Well, I, I know his name was mentioned.
Yeah.
And I, I just assumed that from that time that he was included in this and I didn't know for sure.
Can I say something else about the water, too?
Yes.
You got trouble with your meter, don't call and tell them.
Got trouble what now?
If you have trouble with your meter or anything.
Yeah.
Don't call them, buddy. Mine was leaking, I called down here and told them and I got a bill for four hundred and some dollars for tearing it up.
For tearing it up?
Mm-hmm.
For the tampering?
Yeah. Leroy brought it up there.
I know.
Only meet one term by watching.
Well, I mean, I don't know. I'm sure it came from me, but I don't, I don't remember the.
And Leroy took it back to you and it come to, he got it to a hundred and thirteen dollars, which I didn't feel like I owed that, but I just paid it to be done with.
I mean, if there was a, if there was an ordinance and they told me that somebody had violated, I don't go out and personally investigate.
It was leaking, so I called, my meter's leaking.
We did that.
And it was on their side.
We did that December twenty-seventh about.
Oh, okay, so you just, okay, I follow that then.
I'm gonna ask that lady something she didn't know about it.
I'll give you her number. She's had time to look them over, I'll entertain a motion to accept these minutes approved.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, second. All right, any discussion? Any clarification, additions, deletions? If not, then all in favor, accept the minutes up to ten. Thank you, motion carried. All right, Tara, what have you got for us?
No new business, so it's not.
Okay. Take a look at the financials, if you have any questions, but you have a, a second set of financials that are, we're trying to break in a new, Lisa wasn't here when these got put together and so, breaking in a new one and we're gonna find some bugs every now and then, but we gotta straighten out this before, so. Do we have a, 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 a account?
This one and the one we got back there sometime?
No.
You're breaking in a new restaurant.
You wanna have it for them.
This is the most current one.
Take a while, let's do this.
Yeah.
Did you bring in the five-year?
I think if you'll notice, all the ones that's in the package.
Golf cart permit?
We did the same thing this time as twice, period.
They can run it at night, time of day or anything.
They're not supposed to run after dark.
I've seen them in this town.
Same as it's.
Lights on, running after dark.
And these are different upon that.
Pretty sure the ordinance. They're not allowed to be operated.
Yeah, I have seen them with no lights running after dark.
The police enforcement.
What we've talked about briefly was, I know that we had mentioned stickers for the golf carts. Probably what we need to do is just have a unified system of issuing stickers first of July that run till June thirtieth. That way, we can keep up with who's current, who's not current, you know, so as far as the permissible license to be on the street, so that's what we've talked about.
What do we do now, just whenever they come in or?
Yeah, basically, and I'm not sure that, that we keep them current, you know.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea, that we need an ordinance for that or.
We have an, we have existing, so we'll need to amend, so.
Amended, okay.
So, you're looking to change, change it or add a sticker requirement?
That's the only way to enforce it, 'cause you can't.
Well, and a timely one, that everyone's due July the first.
I think it's in there, but it just unfortunately people don't.
Yeah, and we're not doing anything about it.
I don't think it's.
I don't think it is either.
If I come in today.
They're good for a year from today.
So, a year from issue? So, you wanna, you wanna deadline?
That's actually the.
I'm not sure what they have.
Does everybody pretty much do that? You want me to go ahead and make an emotion to amend the ordinance concerning?
I can just draft one and bring it for the.
Sticker for the.
I didn't know we had to have anything on them.
Yeah, we can throw you in jail.
You can?
Yeah.
Charge you four hundred dollars.
Get the rest of that water bill.
We're gonna bill this for all it's worth.
It won't just be the golf cart ordinance, I think we also have a UTV ordinance, do we not? So, we're probably amending both ordinances.
A vehi, oh, a U, oh, non-ferrous vehicle.
We did utility task vehicles and golf carts, but there are two.
There's two separate ordinances, I believe they fall under two separate statute authorities at the time.
Well, UTV would still qualify to drive at night, right?
Yeah.
Is that what, separate?
I have to look at the ordinance, there's a lot of things in there they wanted to have kind of between the two, but a UTV is better outfitted normally.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I think.
It normally has headlights and rollover bars and whatnot, whereas the golf cart doesn't quite.
And lights.
So, the golf cart doesn't have to have them?
No, but it can't operate at night, I don't believe.
After dark?
I'll pull those, I'll pull those ordinances and I'll have it laid out with the amendments so y'all can see it.
We probably could, could have stopped a lot of golf carts if we stopped kids from driving.
Well, they aren't, it's only supposed to be operated by licensed drivers.
Well, guess what?
You all write the ordinances, you're not the ones that.
I mean, any kid that's got his training wheels off is driving a golf cart, I can tell you.
Oh, we get them up on the street a lot and we're dead end road.
The loop and maneuver too.
I like to turn around in my yard.
I went after ten o'clock one night because I had the drifters.
Mm-hmm.
And I'm like, come on now, and it wasn't kids.
Oh, no, no, we get adults, too.
And I'm like.
They come from your neighborhood over to mine.
I'm a school teacher.
Any questions about the financials?
And I'll make a motion to make special financial.
All right, just standing.
Motion, second.
All right, any discussion? All in favor, up to ten. Thank you. All right, motion carried. The only old business that we would have would be the consideration of Viola's presentation as there, we had taped that from the last meeting, I think, to this meeting.
They called me again.
Okay.
And I, and we, we actually spoke at length this time, but, and I told them the ten-year thing is probably not ever gonna fly because we would still need many more months to look into details. But I said, maybe a five-year plan if you could work up some numbers that, to present to us, so if you guys wanted to give them time for a five-year plan.
I don't think we should, I think we should pursue the.
Have to owe our money.
Yes, it is.
Well, we don't know what.
I mean, I, I have, Viola, let me just say that they did offer to cut it down to a five-year.
Oh, yeah.
They did offer to cut out a half of an employee that they had in there for the water collection and distribution. And I'm trying to think, I wanna try to, they were willing to make some concessions as far as they would be cutting things out of what they would.
Right, even if we did the flood stuff, that would be cut out.
Oh, yeah, the, the goods.
And so, they would just need more time to come back at us with the, with the number to help us out.
Cut it back forty-two thousand, I think.
It gives us another option instead of, it limit, we got limited options, it just gives another option to look at.
That's right, yeah. Well, I think we need to.
We can table it for another thirty days to let them come back at us with another option.
Well, I think we need to pursue the idea of these, these automated reporting systems that.
The software.
Yeah. The software would belong to us and.
Yeah, I had a, I had a chance to go through the facility and, you know, just thinking about it, spending two hundred thousand dollars for them to come in and manage a system versus reinvesting that two hundred thousand dollars back into the plan and the city, it, it seems like the, the problems that we have are not to where they can't be solved, you know, internally. And I think, I think we just need to take a stronger stance of, you know, working with the teams here to get that going forward and, you know, a year from now, if they haven't made any progress to get things under control or if it's six months, then maybe, maybe we could consider somebody else. That was just kind of my thoughts.
Well, we can even look at incentive pays to help make things succeed too somewhat with money. And I'm, I really, of course, I'm an old woman and I know it, but.
I didn't send it.
No, but you're thinking about it. No, but you're thinking about it, I can tell you.
We don't have to.
Here, you told me.
Well.
But, but.
We don't have to vote on that.
No, you don't. We don't even need a motion, Jerry, you need to just sit down there. But I, you know, I, I would like to give the city employees, the ones who wanna work, the opportunity to shine, and give them something to work for, because a lot of them have put in a lot of hours. And it is Hartford's problem, and I think that with the right oversight and.
Oversighting, exactly what the problem is.
Yeah, yeah, I understand. But I think that we have to, I think we need to address a whole lot before we just open the door and turn it over to somebody.
I'm not ready to open the door to anybody, I'm just saying, we had me in compliance in nineteen ninety-three.
Well.
There hasn't been oversight, that was enforced because we keep kicking it down the road.
Well, now, that's not necessarily true, yeah.
Well, that's what we need to show too.
Yeah.
Is, is the progress.
Glad.
You know, these automated reporting would tell a whole lot.
Right. Oh, I'm willing to give it a shot, because we're, we're the, we're the new faces in here, that's for sure. But, we, we still have to do what we gotta do, and not kick a can down the road for another eighteen, nineteen years, I'm not gonna do that.
So George, how do, I mean, how does, how do we publicize the progress that's getting made?
Well, we, we publicize, but it doesn't.
I know.
You know, we have to print the, the EPA's demands that we print on there that we didn't pass, you know, our, um.
TCHs and THCs, yeah.
Uh, levels. Um, the last time, I'm waiting right now for this quarter's results, uh, from our testing. Basically, everything's good for us always except for two basic problems, and that's the THM trihalomethanes and the HAA's, which are halicetic acids. Those are the two things that precipitate in the lines where we've been borderline in the past. Now, I say borderline, it's not like we're way out of whack, it's just, it's supposed to be point oh six, we're like point oh six eight, point oh six five, something like that, point oh seven. And the last time that we did, we were well under the reg, you know, the, the limit set by EPA. I look for the, this, this quarter's to be also under the limits. Our biggest problem is in the summertime, when it's warmer, and, uh, the chlorine is a little more active and creating the byproducts and so, but then, you, you're evaluating over long term, over the whole year, not just on each one, so. But if we can get, you know, three of them under, then the several ones that we sometimes expect to go higher, that doesn't mean we should still not try it too. I've got some things that we're working on that I think's really gonna help us, okay? And I'll make some presentations probably tonight to talk to you about some of those things. Uh, we are actively addressing it, and we know that there are things like the, the backwash lagoons, we know that they need to be cleaned out, uh, we know that the basin where it first comes in, that basin needs to be cleaned out, we know that, uh, we think we can do it without a lot of extra effort and cost, you know.
What is the plan to clean them out and the timeline?
The what now?
What is the plan to clean them out and the timeline?
Well, one of the, one of our biggest problems is our large storage tank.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, the million gallon tank. We only utilize about three hundred fifty thousand gallons a day. So you've got this new water coming in, mixing with the old water that's been in there for a long time.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, chlorine's dissipated, uh, we put a mixer in to help mix this, and it is helping some. But we don't need a million gallons of water.
Okay.
So I've approached an engineer who worked with Centertown on their tank. He's in Danville, he's a professional engineer.
The second time around, right?
Uh.
The second time around?
Second time around, not first time.
Yeah.
Not their first gasket.
That upset Lexi.
But I've approached this engineer, he was recommended by Centertown, um, and I told him what our problem was, that we had too big a tank, and some things have been offered as possible solutions, such as filling it up with rock, pouring a concrete base, and just utilizing the part that we, we need, you know. Um, putting a floor in, a floor that's supported underneath, and that way you're only using, you've gotta have the height for the pressure, but we don't need the volume. And he's come up with a plan, he says it's doable, that would cut down the capacity of that tank to four hundred fifty thousand gallons. We use three hundred fifty thousand a day. If we ever decide to sell water to someone, then we still would have the capacity with that tank, and the small tank has a hundred twenty-five thousand gallons in it. So we still have the capacity to be able to sell water if, if that opportunity ever erupts. But by having four hundred fifty thousand, using three hundred fifty thousand, we get better turnover out of our water. It cuts down on our loss of chlorine, the, the creation of the byproducts and things like that. The project is about, he, he estimates roughly about a three hundred thousand dollar project, which we would have to go through grad, through the Water Management Council over there, get the okay from them, go through grad, and try to acquire grants and loans to, to do that project. But the people, the engineers tell, tell me that, and the water plant people say that would be a solution to a lot of our problems, is to cut down on the problem created by having too large a tank.
And then the solution for cleaning the lagoons?
Uh, as soon as the weather clears up, yes, and so it becomes, what we'd have to do there, there's two different lagoons side to side, we'd have to just drain one of them.
Right.
And clean it out, they wanna do some work on some of the piping that's in the bottom of it, try to raise that piping up a little bit where it's more effective.
What I'm looking for is a timeline.
Oh.
They know, because we've, we've talked about it three times in a row, that's what they wanted to do.
Yeah, uh, that'd be more like a summertime project, whenever they could get in there without all the rain, and, uh.
So this summer, start a, a cleanup project?
Of course, the, uh.
Hopefully.
The, uh, pre-treatment basin could be done, you know, as soon as it gets warm enough and, and things kinda settle down, you know, because it's under roof.
And with the lagoons cleaned out, explain the benefit of that for everybody here.
Well, the filters, of course, they're filtered out all the sediment and the, and the, the byproducts, the, the precipitous that come from adding the, uh, takes out the over-organic compounds, uh, with the sodium permanganate and some of the other things that they add.
Mm-hmm.
It's all ends up in this filter here. Of course, you got this media that the water goes through, and this catches all this, and it had, you had to backwash that occasionally, you know, every so often to, to get all this excess, uh, things that you strained out the water, so to speak.
Mm-hmm.
Well, it, it, it's flushed up to the lagoons, and then once it settles there, then that water goes back into the river. I think that's where it goes. I'll say that's where it goes. There's not much else to play for, too, except that.
That's why, I, I wish. When we would, that's why I wish when we talked about that, we would have water folks at the meeting as well, because.
Okay.
Because they can hear what we're talking about too, because I like.
Yeah.
I like talking about people when they're not here, but, uh.
Right.
But, but they are involved, and directly involved.
Um, but those are some problems there. I've got something to present to you tonight that would, is another step in that direction of trying to better monitor the use of our chemicals, and so. It's just those kind of things right there that we're able to focus in on, that we know that our problem areas for us, and try to find those solutions that, you know, that we can incorporate one at a time, and it's just have a lengthy process to do that.
And, and it's the only reason why I keep bringing up the Viola thing, because they seem to have a solution, a tangible timeline for each one of those.
Okay.
And if they, I, I'm pretty sure we're all in agreement that the ten year thing is not something we would entertain. I assumed, and, and I know we're not really supposed to assume, but if they come back and hit us with a five year thing, taking out the things that, that, that they discussed with yourself and us doing the lagoon project, uh, it might be something that we, if nothing else, get some ideas from them during a presentation to give our guys, I don't know.
Well, you know, if.
He's not going to work for them.
To try to find.
No.
To try, to try to find.
Job, Mary.
I wonder, like, you should push them.
But to try to find some kind of little ground here.
You know, we've discussed a lot.
If we try something for a year, year and a half, and we don't get any proof as well, we'd know where to find them.
Yeah.
Right.
So I'm trying to find some kind of.
Sure.
Maybe an area, a little ground like that.
What's the make capacity of the water plant? How much can it make a day?
Well, um, it's kinda hard to answer because it's a million gallon a day plant.
Okay.
We're not allowed to take that much out of the river. We're only allowed to take something like seven hundred and forty thousand gallons a day out of the river. Uh, we only take out what we need to meet the day's needs, to fill up the, to fill up the tanks. And that's why they may start at five o'clock in the morning, be done two o'clock in the afternoon. They've got that much water already stored up for the next day, you know, that we know. So, um, now, if we, if we do anything more than, let's see, we're only allowed.
You have the.
We're only allowed eighty percent, and then we'd have to add another filter to the plant. But we've got the, we've got the space and the connections already if we do have to add another filter. If we ever decide, but that'd be a large project for us to do that.
I'd like to hear again from our water folks at the next meeting.
Okay.
To, to kinda dial that in some, uh.
Maybe some of the things that they've done too, and some of the agreements they've made.
Exactly, I'd be interested in that too.
You know, I wanna get a feel that they have ownership in the process and, because that's where it, it just comes down to the culture, right? If you got the right culture there, they're gonna make it happen, if not.
Yeah.
Because if it's not there, then it's, it's lack of ability, and then you can go find somebody else that has the knowledge to move a team forward that's got good culture.
We've, we've got conscientious operators. They, they love Hartford, they do, right, but sometimes, uh, you know, you've got people coming on board, and they learn from the previous ones, and so sometimes, uh, things that need to be done kinda get forgotten, or, you know, you just.
And that's why I want them, because I want to hear from them what they need from us.
Yeah.
Well, I think you're gonna find out.
I'm not scared.
That's, no, 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 that since George became mayor, they've had far more of a listening ear than they've had in a long time.
I'm all about that.
And I think that, you know, the few short months he's been there and, and we've been here two months, and I think things are moving very well, and I think it's due to George's leadership and his willingness to get in and dig.
I don't, I don't talk about this out of my own doing, you know, they tell me that this is what we need to do, you know.
Right.
I don't.
But like I said, they've got the listening ear.
My engineering capabilities.
They know they got us all here.
Yeah.
Bring it, bring, what can we do for you, you know, to get it going, that, you know, that's another option.
Yeah. They're, they're, I know that they're not averse to the software program, you know, uh, but, uh, that needs to be, they're telling you, not me, so.
Yeah.
I just out of curiosity, when you all signed up with the rural water, for some of that monitoring and everything, does rural water, do they not have any input on software or different features that they could recommend, since that's what they do every day?
Well.
You're already paying them in a consultant fee.
This is, this is one device that they've come up with that's been recommended by Division of Water, Rural Water. And what this does is this measures the turbidity in the water. They can, it's portable, they can use it here at the plant, they can use it out at the lines, they can, but the turbidity, the more turbid the water is, the more chemicals they have to use. So this is instantaneous reading of what the turbidity is, that they can adjust the chemical use right now, and not wait till it's processed and say, well, how did this work, you know, will we add this? Did we add enough, or did, because it's already in lines, it's already in the system. What this does is to try to immediately give a input, and so that's some of the things that, that's one of the things, this is, this instrument costs two thousand one hundred and eighty dollars. It's, the only thing that'd go bad on us, a little crystal glass right there, and they said if you drop it, it'll break, you know. Uh, but this is just, it's got a cigarette lighter plug in, to be used in a pickup truck or whatever, it's portable. Let you all have a look at that, that's one of the things that they would ask, they ask if I'd recommend to you that we purchase, so.
And our water, this is what our water folks said they need?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's just one of those things that, you know, they've come up with that is supposed to help with cutting down on chemical use, that we know exactly what needs to be put in, you know, right now, instead of wait till after it's done, and then try and take back adjustments, too much or too little.
Have there been any more of the, uh, reporting violations?
No, as far as, see, we have, uh, Clint Weddington, who keeps an eye out for us at the Division of Rural Water. He monitors our reports going in and makes sure that, see, a lot of our violations have been reports not filled in on time, or not filled in correctly, or something like that, it's more paper mistakes than it was product mistakes. And so, that's, uh, he watches out for us, and he intercedes on our behalf with the Division of Water in Frankfurt. And so, he's got connections up there that has saved us quite a few times with penalties and late, late dates that we've sent things in. We're just trying to make the people more responsible down at the plant, so we check them, they bring it up here, we check them before we send it in, so, am I telling the truth? Pretty close.
Do you need any more from me, I mean, I believe so?
Mm-hmm.
Do you need any more from me, before I leave?
No, no, you're excused.
We want you to get healthy.
Oh, well, I do appreciate that.
We, we expect you to come in with weights on you.
I got plenty of weight on me, Maryville, that's the problem.
No, I said weights.
Yeah.
I want you to come in with that lead thing around your ankles and your arms and all that.
I'll tell you what, I'll meet you there.
I'll come watch you.
All right.
See, remember, you.
I would've gotten a little wet.
It's getting cold out there, too.
Stay there.
Yeah.
Um, so, what is the general consensus of the council regarding Viola's offer to cut back on the length of term, cut back on some of the costs if we do it ourselves, things like that? Cut back on, have an employee?
I recommend that they hit us again with new proposals.
With a new proposal?
For five years, not a ten year. Under, you know, if we take on a lot of this.
Okay.
Just as another option, and again, it kinda, it's kind of a motivator.
So you're gonna make that in form of a motion?
Yes, that's what my motion is.
All right, is there a second to that?
Second that.
Okay, any discussion to it? Okay, if you're in favor of that motion, uplifted hand. If you're not, uplifted hand, okay. I'll contact David and tell him to make a new proposal for our next meeting, all right? All right, new business, um. We have three people in the office who, uh, sign, are on our signature cards at the banks to sign checks. Um, there are times when I may be gone to vacation, something like that, be gone for a lengthy period of time. If some, if one of those is sick, we've only got one signatory on, so. Uh, we use, usually use two council people that are pretty much, uh, handy, pretty va, pretty much available, uh, all, all days, all hours of the day, not all hours, but during work. Not all hours, but during work hours. So I'd like to recommend that we put, uh, Maryville and Jerry as the two additional signators on our checking accounts, uh, to sign checks. We hardly ever use them, but there are times.
The bank will of course have a motion to remove Jerry and Tony as well. You have a motion to remove the people and then the bank will of course.
Thank you. Then the motion would be that we remove Jerry, uh, Scoggins and Tony Ward from the past signature cards and put, uh, Maryville and Jerry Likens on the new signature cards. Now, if you want to make that into a motion, I'll entertain it if you want somebody else.
Make a motion.
Okay. Second. Any discussion? I just know that some of you are not available sometimes during the day. Some of you work and do some traveling and things like that, so we felt like these two were the more homebodies then.
Are checks required?
Two signatures.
Yeah. Okay, all in favor? Thank you. All right. The next thing is sanitation truck.
One we got pretty rough shape then.
Well, a couple of weeks ago, the springs, the rear springs on one side broke. And they hobbled through to the rest of the route. We've got two sets of rear springs over here, Owensboro West Side Auto Parts or someplace over there. I mean, they were new sets of springs. And, uh, we put them on ourself. But then it came in a week or so later and said, well, we've got a weld on the tub because it's starting to come apart. You know, we're still able to use the truck, but there's going to come a time when that truck's going to have to be replaced. Uh, out here on the old railroad bed off Oakwood Drive, some of you don't know where I'm talking about there. Close to Smiley's Upholstery Shop. We put in a sewer line years ago and that was funded with, uh, regional wastewater, right? And we've been paying monthly on that to pay that note off. We've got, what, two more payments to make?
In, in April.
It's about four thousand dollars a month, isn't it?
Forty-two seventy-five.
Okay. A little over four thousand dollars a month is what we're paying. What I'd like to do is once we get that note paid off, to take that forty-two hundred or wherever it is a month that we've been paying on that note and start a fund to build up toward purchasing a new garbage truck. The garbage truck we've got now cost, what was it, fifty-nine thousand, fifty-six, fifty-nine thousand back in nineteen, two thousand nine? I believe is what it was, something like that. A new one. The garbage trucks that we use are small enough that they don't require CDL license for our guys to be able to drive. Uh, a new one, that's the largest one under that CDL limit, right now costs us a hundred and forty-two thousand dollars. That's how much they've gone up in basically ten years. So that's one reason I want to start this fund to try to cut down on the initial investment that we'd have to make in purchasing a new truck when this one becomes inoperable. We probably can put up a surplus property and get just a little bit for it, you know, from. We sold the last one for, well, actually we sold it twice.
You get paid twice?
That's a long story, but, uh, second time we sold it, we got more than we did the first time. So it worked out good. We paid the first guy off and still has profit. I'm sorry. It was, it was a humorous situation. But, uh, sometimes there are people who do buy surplus property for various reasons. So cylinders, tires, springs, things like that, they can salvage off of them.
Well, how long, I mean.
How long do I expect it to last?
Yes.
We're not in any hurry to buy the new one.
Right, but.
But garbage is hard on a truck. I mean, all the acids and the liquids and everything that goes in it. Uh, right now, I expect it to last another year or two, maybe. I'm hoping. I've fingers crossed. Uh, but I can't guarantee it, you know?
Yeah.
We're going to do our best. We, we take cylinders. We can get a lot of cylinders reworked, uh, even end caps. We can get them machined up here at the Quaidi. They'll do, they do some machining up there that we've used them several times and saved a huge amount on buying, having to buy a new cylinder or something like that, so. But either way, I'd like, uh, I'd like, I guess, a motion to say that we start that, diverting that money after the, that loan's paid off into a fund that will be for the purpose of a garbage truck.
I'll make that motion.
Okay. Second. All right. Any discussion regarding it?
That the money comes from the occupational tax fund?
Okay, that's where the money does come from.
Yeah, yeah.
So it will come out of the occupational tax.
Okay.
Have you looked into buying a used one from a larger cities?
Well, a larger city would probably have one that's a CDL, require a CDL driver. Okay, they're, they're, like some of these trucks that go down to, uh, River Bend. Those are much bigger trucks and they do require some, an operator to have CDL. We don't have anybody that's got a CDL that could, we could drive it, you know? Uh, have you looked into it, if you're buying somebody else's discard, why are they getting rid of it? Maybe because.
I just know what the board, they just wanted to need a bucket truck.
Yeah.
And I think they went down somewhere in, uh, Georgia or somewhere and bought one and it, they've had it now several years and it stills.
Bucket trucks are different from garbage trucks.
Now, we're going to divert the whole forty-two hundred into the fund?
Yeah.
Yes.
In two years, that'd be a hundred and, a hundred thousand dollars.
Right.
So that almost.
That'd go a long ways. Probably would have to borrow would be manageable.
This can be like a sublager and still stay within occupational tax fund. You don't want to create anything.
Right. Yeah, it's just.
It's a sublager.
Yeah.
It's just a sub, you know, it's bookkeeping is what it is. Money still be there. It's just bookkeeping. That would be my only concern is when the garbage truck is replaced, a lot of times it's just, you know, I don't know what ours would be like if we put it up for surplus property being.
But some people might replace theirs every five years.
Right.
And I also saw a report once that one of the biggest, uh, things that is stolen for is, uh, automobile or mechanical stuff.
Yeah.
Is, uh, big garbage trucks, like New York City.
Yeah.
They said the number of them are so stolen every day and taken somewhere else and resold because they bring good money. So we say we're going to get one.
They were looking for us.
Drive it home.
You must buy a hot truck from New York.
We don't, we tell them we don't want to know if it's hot, but we don't want to know it, yeah. Get the, get rid of the bodies out of it too. Yeah, we don't need those.
Maryville first, you second?
Who seconded that motion there?
I did.
Okay, Tony did. Okay, any more discussion?
They had to keep the booster seat out of this for a driver, didn't they? Yeah. I think you said that more.
Yeah, yeah, you did.
All right. If there's no discussion, then all in favor, thank you. I appreciate it. All right, uh, cemetery materials. Um, at Memorial Gardens, we've got, got it finished. The only thing that we lack, that we'd like to put in there is two columns like we had for the small entrance at Oakwood. Just recently, we put two stone columns in front of that gate there. Just kind of dress it up a little bit. Um, I've had the same person who paid for those columns that offered to pay for the labor in putting up these two new columns. So all we'd have to do is buy the materials. The last time we bought materials for those two columns was in the nine hundred and forty dollar range. Okay, that includes the stone and all the, the concrete for the base and mortar and everything else. The labor for this project would be paid for. All I need would be, uh, permission to go ahead and purchase the materials. They get the rock from, I can't remember, E-Town or someplace like that. It's a company that makes a, uh, I forgot how thick it is. It's, it's rock that's only about, you know, inch and a half, three inches, something like that thick. And then I thought he did a good job when he did the ones up by the small entrance at Oakwood. So we'd like to put those in front of the gates. I don't know if y'all have been by there to see the new gates, but we got it right up in the county paper today.
Yeah.
I thought that was.
It was very nice. It was so much.
Well, you know, the council, previous council was the one responding for that. I got, uh, some credit that I shouldn't have. It's the previous council that's been the one credited with that. And I'd like permission to go ahead and purchase the necessary rock materials to create two posts just like the ones at Small Entrance at Oakwood, so.
Make a motion here. I second that.
Okay. That money too would come out of the occupational tax funds where the last, uh, all the work up there has come from. Okay. All right, discussion about, uh, the motion to purchase that rock? All in favor? Okay, thank you. Uh, sewer lines. I've talked to some of you to get an okay so we can go ahead and start on it. Uh, we had a request to, uh, to people that purchased some property up there. They could put in, they could locate the house where they could put in a sewer system with the lateral lines, a septic tank and lateral lines. Uh, from Zimmerman Street, this is on Taylor Avenue. Taylor Avenue is up close to the old Slaughter House, okay? Phillips Avenue was the one that would run into the Slaughter House. Okay, the next street down towards Clay Street is Taylor, okay?
Is that where you're talking about that trailer a little bit?
Yeah.
Yeah, but that's, that's over across.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Across the ditch.
Yeah, across the ditch is right. Um, Ms. Wilma Wilson has a house on that street. She's got a septic tank and lateral lines. A lot of people don't know that. We've got those situations in Hartford because there never was a sewer line put in there.
Yeah.
I'd like to put in two hundred feet of eight inch sewer line. They'd have to put in a manhole connected to the other manhole, but they'd have to drill into that manhole to accommodate the eight inches because I'm not sure how big the manhole they've got, how big a line is. It's already there, how big it accommodates. But they'd have to do some drilling to make it, reaming it out to make it bigger. So it's putting in a manhole, two hundred feet of sewer line and then fitting it into another existing manhole. Uh, it's fifteen thousand, five hundred dollars for eight inch line. And that way we would have a big enough line to, uh, accommodate if there's some more developing that would take place there because there's some property around there that there's talk about it being developed with, uh, house duplexes, things like that. So, uh, I know I've already got four of you saying okay, so can I get a motion to make it official to we do that?
I'll make a motion and you go with it.
I second it.
All right. Discussion about the motion.
I, matter of fact, I'd like to see Hartford encourage more people to get off those septic tanks. We don't need any in the city, period. I think when they ask, we should let them do it.
That's occupational tax there too because it's, because it is infrastructure.
We just need to make sure they put it in properly and we don't have to redo them in a few years. Did you say it was a six inch line?
Eight inch.
Eight inch, okay.
Yeah. They've had an offer for six inch, but it was like four hundred dollars cheaper. And it's, that pretty limits, uh, six inch does a lot of limiting. This way we can take in, I think there's probably going to be two houses that will go to this line. But there can be across the street, across the diagonal corner. There can be development there that we could tie into that one line here.
And it may encourage more development, really, to know that this water.
I'm thrilled that somebody is doing it because last year, we just, last year we had a problem with groundhogs up there, you know? And this is going to, I think, drive them out. All right. Any more discussion? If you're in favor of that, thank you. All right. Um, we've already talked about the alleyway on Taylor Street. We've proposed that. Uh, the Walker Street property. David Coleman came to me and asked me to bring this before the council. Does everybody know where his church is up there at the corner, right across from Melon Park? His little church. Okay, he's got a parking lot there. There's some property up on top of the hill right there that, well, he says it's just some things that people on Sunday don't want to see, okay? He wanted to put up a fence up there at the, right next to that. When he got to investigating, and the city of Hartford owns a little rectangle there. It's one sixth of an acre, okay? Uh, I'm not sure whether the dimensions are for it, but it's not big enough hardly for us to be able to do anything with. Uh, he wants to, his church wants to purchase that property and extend their parking lot and put up a fence at the very end of it to shield people up there. So he asked if I would approach you all about selling that piece of property to the church. I didn't even know the city owned the property there, but.
I don't know why we wouldn't. I mean, a sixth of an acre?
Yeah, point, zero point one six acre.
Ain't big enough for nothing, is it?
Certainly.
It wa.
Ain't big enough for nothing.
And it's, it's, it's more narrow than it is, as long as that, you know, it's, uh, about like this table here, you know, it's not.
I hate to get rid of that much property.
Well, I think before we can offer to him, in fairness to the citizens of Hartford, we'd need to have it appraised, you know, of course. So if it's our Q, I'll go ahead and proceed with appraisal and bring it back to the council and see if y'all agree able to that.
Yes.
Yes.
All right, the last thing right there, well, this listed. It says water pump and sewer meter. Uh, one of the things that the water department has approached me about is the sewer pump right down here on Seer Town Road as you're going out the very last one. That's what we use to pump or what the regional wastewater uses to pump our sewage down to their plant. And then it's metered down there. Well, they've got lines that run across fields and under roads and things like that that I'm satisfied that's where some of our leakage, our I and I is coming in. It's in their lines, but we're paying for it. What we'd like to do is put a meter up on our line before it goes into that pump. They can put a sound meter, which you've got your pipe and there's three sensors that are put around the outside of it. It doesn't go inside, you know, which would cause blockages and cause problems. But then this can measure the flow that's going out. And we can compare our reading with what they say their reading is. And we can say, well, this is what our reading is if there's anything between here and there that you're all flat.
Right.
Excuse me. The, the estimate on that meter is about fourteen thousand dollars, okay? Our sewer bill this past month, what they initially sent us was a hundred thousand dollars. Uh, they are granting us, uh, a break and it ended up being about seventy-nine thousand dollars, okay? Uh, they have done that for a year or two. They've given us that break on the rate. Uh, and it's been extremely helpful. It's helped us build up a little bit of a reserve. But when you have a bill like seventy-nine thousand, it takes that reserve down pretty quick. What we're hoping is that this would be an argument for us to say, fix your lines so that we're not paying for that, okay? We realize we've got I and I, but I don't think all of the I and I is in the city limits of Hartford. I think some of it's in. I think some of us now, in those lines.
Does it gauge actually the amount that goes through there?
The meters, how many gallons?
And they would have to, what, go down there and read it every so often, or?
Well, we, yeah, I think you could read it, of course you want to read it right the same time that they're reading their meter, but I think it behooves us to do, you know, not necessarily a daily check, but at least a weekly check on our readings, see what are. Now, we've had some things get into our sewer lines that have ended up in their pumps. And so far, what it's done is broken shafts. And one of them was a clay tile that got in there, and another one was a piece of PVC pipe or something that got in there and wedged the pump, and ended up breaking the shaft. It's happened twice, and both times that it's happened, the company has stood behind the shaft. But they said, next time it happens, they're going to have somebody down here to see when they pull that pump out, and if it is, that we're going to have to replace it. But there's not a thing we can do to stop that, you know, we can't put up any kind of a, a screen or anything like that to catch big chunks because it creates blockage in the line, so.
Yeah.
I'm just giving you a warning.
But at least we can, because those pumps and those shafts aren't cheap.
No, no, about twenty thousand, I think.
Yeah.
Okay. But anyway, I'd, I'd like for us to consider putting, purchasing that meter and putting on our line. If you're, like I said, it's about fourteen thousand, the money would come out of occupational tax since it is the infrastructure that we're dealing with.
George, before the council changed, didn't we talk about that before? I thought we already decided to.
Well.
Put a meter on it.
We had talked about doing it, but I don't know that we acted on going ahead with the okay to purchase one. We talked about it, but I don't remember, do you remember?
There's not a motion.
Huh?
You don't have a motion for it.
We didn't have a motion before, we talked about it.
Yeah, I knew that we talked about it.
But I think we've, we've now reached the point where we feel like it, fourteen thousand dollars would probably save us some money in the short run, really.
Could pay for it in one month.
It might do, you know.
Yeah, you never know.
The technology that we would use, is it the same down there? That reads?
I think they use something like a sonic meter. I don't think they have a, a flow meter in the line, I don't think they have that. I think it's, I think it's similar to what they use.
Yeah, I would advise if, when we've done that in the past, we use the same exact device.
Yeah.
That way, there's no question on, it's the same reliability.
They could.
Kevin can probably tell you that.
He, yeah, he can. And I think our fellows ain't know it, maybe.
Well, yeah, probably do.
Uh, but I would entertain a motion, whether you want to purchase one or not.
I'll make a motion, we put a meter on it, purchase one.
Okay.
I second it.
Okay, any discussion? On favor? Thank you. Another issue down at the plant is this. I'm trying to get all of these, yeah, we need to talk about that one too, if you want to purchase that. When the water river gets high, trash collects around our intake. The intakes work good if the water level's down, we don't have a lot of trash building up around it, that works fine. But when it does get up high, we have a four-inch pump, it's a diesel engine, I mean, they put a suction line in, fire it up, it's hooked to a line that goes directly to the plant, up to a pit, it goes to plant. And it pumps the water just directly out of the river up there. And so, called a waste pump because it'll handle debris up to three inches, okay? I don't know about fish, but it'll handle debris. But anyway, it will go bad at times, you know, like any other piece of machinery, there's repairs. Well, just recently, there were two bearings on a shaft that went bad. So the company that we go to is over at Evansville, we take our machine over, and we rent one of their machines to do our work. Eighteen hundred dollars a week.
Phew.
Okay. What I've suggested to the people at the plant, and they're agreeable, they think it's a, I think it's a wise idea, we purchase our own machine for a reserve. That way, if our basic machine goes down, has to be repaired, we take it over there. I mean, they're not in a hurry to repair our machine because.
To get money off of us.
We got their rental, okay? So I've examined, looked for some pumps, and we would try to more closely examine these. But we can get a six-inch pump that'll pump up to a thousand gallons a minute. Our, our need is somewhere in, the pump that goes into the plant right now is somewhere in the five-hundred, fifty to five-hundred, seventy-five gallon per minute rate of flow. We can get a six-inch pump that will pump up to a thousand gallons a minute, which means we won't have to run at that capacity, uh, for somewhere in the neighborhood of nine to ten thousand dollars. As a, one of them I looked at has got a Honda V-twin that drives it as gas, which is the worst thing probably, but, you know, if it's not being used, it's stored inside the plant. But a couple of years ago, this company over at Evansville received a hundred twenty-five thousand dollars from the city of Hartford for one year's rental and repair.
Phew.
Yeah.
How much?
Was it a hundred twenty-five thousand, a few years ago?
For one year.
For one year.
They pay us that too.
Well, at eighteen hundred.
Eighteen hundred dollars a week, yeah.
A week.
That's what our revenue is right now.
We're looking at five thousand a month right there.
Yeah.
What normally happened too is when the pump came back repaired, it worked, it worked. They did that one day, and then immediately they'd come back and get it.
Get it, and you had to start your rental again.
For one week.
This way, there's no incentive for them to keep our, our pump over there. I mean, they take it, they get it in, get it out, because there's no reason for them to keep it, you know, I mean.
Jeez.
The other way, they'd have a reason to keep it.
Yeah.
I'm not saying that they'd do that underhand, it's because they probably were stacked up with other work too.
How often do you have to use that pump?
When the water's high.
Just when the water's high.
Yeah.
So are you.
Well.
Here lately.
Sometimes, sometimes they're able to get water out of our regular intake, but whenever it gets clogged up, they have to go to this reserve pump, you know, they have to go to this exterior pump, this outside pump.
Is this pump, the one you're discussing, gas?
This one, the one I looked at was gas, yeah. The ones that have diesel engines, of course, they're going to be about six or seven thousand dollars higher.
And you're also, after hours, going to be driving to Beaver Down to get the diesel?
Yeah.
With the oil power in Hartford together?
Do what now?
And you have, would have to get that diesel from Beaver Down because you can't get it after hours in Hartford, and that's what we've done in the past. You're paying.
Well, it just doesn't make sense to pay eighteen hundred dollars a week for a nine-thousand-dollar piece of equipment.
And like I said, you know, this, these are, these are just some that I've gone through, looking for it on the internet, you know, the different types of pumps.
Yeah.
Uh, these were, right now, that four-inch is what we're using. If we go to a six-inch pump, they'd have to have either an adapter or some new line, you know, both suction line and delivery line, but that's a lot cheaper than several weeks of eighteen hundred dollars a week. But that way, we've got our own spare.
Yeah.
And we can use it anytime, we don't have to wait for them to bring it over or anything like that, you know, we'd have it available right away. It's, it's a pump, it's on wheels, you know, you just put it behind the truck, pull it down there, back it in, hook it up, fire it up, so.
As long as they know they emptied the gas out, when they go to store it.
What I'd like is just the permission to spend a little more time looking at, at these pumps and.
I think we definitely need to buy a pump instead of paying that much money on one.
Yeah, that, that makes sense, you know, it's just another cost-saving issue we're trying to incorporate.
And there's not like another vendor either, because we've already checked into that, put the switch to different vendor, they pretty much got it.
I think you should go ahead and look, and if you find one, buy it.
Okay. But then, if it's agreeable with, what the water plant thinks is sufficient to, then can I get a motion to?
I'll make a motion.
With a maximum of ten thousand dollars to come out of occupational tax.
I second that.
Infrastructure, okay, any discussion? Okay, if you're in favor of that, that's okay, thank you.
I've been, I've been looking at new sewer machines, and so you just spent money, and I'm happy now.
Okay. Okay, now what about this little machine here? Are you in favor of that, or, I mean, it's?
Most certainly, I think if.
It comes recommended by the Division of Rural Water, and so I think it's something that would.
Plus, that's what the guys have asked for, so.
Yeah, it is.
I'm all about that.
So, can I get a motion for that, purchase?
I'll make a motion, I'll second.
Okay, second here, here, discussion? Uh, thank you. Okay, the thank you, because, um, they're trying, found ways that they can improve the operation down there, and that was one that came recommended to them. Okay, um, I told you about the, the tank problem, and I had been contacting the engineer. Do you want me to go ahead and tell him to start a preliminary engineering report? Uh, he sent some, a contract for us. Uh, he said if, if you go by the USDA Rural Development Fee Schedule, uh, like the preliminary documents would probably be, uh, would likely exceed over thirty thousand dollars. He said additionally, we typically see a consultant billing fifteen thousand dollars for a preliminary engineering report, engineering inspection would likely exceed thirty thousand, so, and totally, he said that what they've outlined would probably exceed seventy-five thousand dollars. Okay, his contract that he gave us says to do a preliminary engineering report would cost, mm, twenty thousand, three hundred dollars. And that would take it all the way to, I have to read all these. They would coordinate the site survey for the existing tank, if necessary, they coordinate the geotechnical engineering for the proposed construction, see if it, you know, if it can, if the grounds can stand up to it, which I think it probably could if it's been dealing with emitting gallons of water. A preliminary engineering report to alter it to four hundred fifty thousand gallons, development contract documents for the construction of the proposed elevated tank, assist in the Kentucky Division of Water Construction approval for the tank, he would go to bat for us before. We've got to take a proposal to the Water Management Council at Grad, they have to okay it before Grad can then send the proposal to whoever they give to supplies with the grant and the funds. Anyway, he's doing quite a bit there. That part of it would be the twenty thousand, three hundred dollars.
Will you have to entertain bids, but that being over twenty thousand dollars?
Probably would. We'd have to bid this out. I'm just trying to tell you, you know, what he's, what his prices are right there, we already have his, basically his bid. To provide assistance during the bidding process, such as the recommendation for a reward, provide contract administration services during the construction, he said that would, you know, they would provide services for up to six months. I don't think it'd take that long to do it, I hope it doesn't take that long to do it, we can't stand six months, that tank being down. And then, he said that would be another thirty-five hundred dollars, you know, for, after the bids are okayed and construction starts, then it would be another thirty-five hundred dollars about. So anyway, that's what his bid is. I would like to bid this project out though and see, because it's, it's going to be approximately, he has made a three hundred thousand dollar project, and you have to start somewhere. I think this is a badly needed project for us to get our water system more into what we need instead of what somebody sold us a long time ago.
Has Grad been approached about any of this? I mean, there's not been any lead work into it.
Um, but it's like she said, you know, I can't go into this contract without, without it being bid, he knows it's got to be bid.
Yeah.
Well, I think it's back, yeah, he's over twenty thousand, yeah.
Well, and then the other thing as far as funding, until the water project, as far as you're taking back CAI funds and loans, until that, the current project is completely done, I mean, I know it's physically, it's physically done, but paperwork is not done, you're not eligible.
We've got to finish this other.
Yeah.
Close this other deal out because you only have one project.
Right, right.
Kentucky Infrastructure's, uh, administration, I guess. Anyway, you know about what it's going to take. Do you want to pursue that idea and bid the project, or do you want to keep the tank we got, deal with it like it is?
I think we need to fix our tank core to be usable for us and not be wasting so much water.
Yeah.
Yeah. That's a big cause of a lot of our flushing. A lot of our flushing is because of that, it's also because of the dead-end lines that we've got. We have automatic flushers on the ends of a lot of our dead-end lines, but we still probably would have that because of dead-end line, you're going to end up with problems, you know, just being dead-end.
It's that particular tank where a lot of the.
Do what?
That particular tank is part of the problems of the HIA violations.
But do you want me to go ahead and pursue this with a, asking for bids or not?
Yeah, I think we should.
I think we should.
Ask for bids.
I have a motion then.
I'll make a motion, you get bids on it.
Okay.
Second.
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 All right, any discussion? Lift a hand, thank you. Uh, one other thing, catch you up on our sidewalk project, you noticed that we've started on that. I'm really excited about what this is going to turn out to be because I think it's going to, people are just going to really be in awe by the time it finally gets finished, just the way it's going to dress up downtown. We had a problem today, um, in front of Capers, they pulled, they pulled concrete out, removed the concrete, and there was a hole. And look down the hole, and there's a room down at the bottom. And the front of Capers, it comes out underneath the sidewalk, roughly three to four feet. And nobody knew the roof was there. I guess people knew the roof was there, but didn't know how it was going to affect putting in a sidewalk above it, because when you take it out, there's a hole there. So the engineers have been over to look at it, it's really, it's going to be fixable, it's going to be a change order to our contract. I don't think it's going to be very much, the, the way it is now. What we've got is just a little small room there in front of Capers. There is a solid partition. There is a solid partition part of the wall. And then you've got two little side rooms. It looks something like that, okay? Here's the street out here. Capers is back here. That's their basement. Okay, there's two little side rooms there.
That's under the sidewalk.
It's under the sidewalk. Because this, this is the front of their building right here, so that's underneath their sidewalk. You do have this strength. I think it's solid. I think it's solid. But there's two little doors here that have openings. There's no doorway. It's just, it's a doorway, no doors. And what they're going to do is just simply put corrugated metal perpendicular to the road. You know, and then pour concrete over that, which is, it's down all the time. Trouble is, there's no support here, so they had to call the owner. And he's, he's very agreeable to whatever they've got to do to, to bridge this, these openings so that they can put the corrugated metal in and then they can pour the concrete over that. But that's totally unexpected and they'll tell them what else they'll find under the streets of Hartford, you know, the sidewalks of Hartford.
I think it's just downright exciting.
There may be some history to that.
There's got to be, and like I said, I can see out of the phone, out of the phone store is good.
It might not, it might have been a coal bin or something like that.
Yeah.
They had, at one time.
What's going on down there, moonshine still?
Yeah, at one time they probably had a trapdoor, they just shoveled coal down in those bins and then they shoveled it out of that into their progress.
Oh, you can make it more romantic than that.
No.
There's a coal sheet, look like sticking out there in front of our building.
The reason, yeah. But they didn't find anything under your.
Should have called Geraldo.
Yeah, there you go.
I stored all my extra cash in it, but there wasn't nothing in there.
I think it's funny. I mean, it, it is surprising, but you're right. There's not much telling what we could find under the city of Hartford.
Okay. Uh, that's all I have. If y'all have something that you want to bring up, now would be a good time to do it. Oh, wait a minute, I've got one other thing. I thought it went this way and went over this way. I put one here in the middle. When we were over at the KLC meeting, uh, this, I was talking with this young lady out there, Jessica Springs. Uh, she represents this company. And what they do is they, they go on to these old city sidewalks like we have. Wherever there's a trip hazard, they'll go through and they will saw that trip hazard off at a one and twelve slope. And they remove that, that trip hazard then. And so what you'll see there, there are some diagrams and there's some pictures of where they have earmarked various things, like a quarter inch trip hazard, a half inch trip hazard, up to two inch trip hazard. The, the quarters are the yellow dots. The halves are the one, one half inch to, one half inch to two inch trip hazard. I think the highest one we've got is like point five, four inches or something like that, I believe. That's what I read there. But what they've listed are areas that are not receiving new sidewalk, okay? Uh, the other side of Main Street, coming up Center Street. I think there's one on Apple Alley here behind the courthouse. And then they're getting all of this up from the library, the jail up, library all the way up to Walnut Street, I believe is what they've got there. They have it listed, uh, they will take out, under one plan, they take out the quarter inch, which is the minimum. They take out that quarter inch up to two inch, uh, cut it out. They don't grind it off. It's, it's, a saw comes in, cuts it off sideways. It leaves a smooth surface. If you grind it, it's going to leave some ridges, some grit in it. Trying to think what else. It tells you how many linear feet that they're going to, under two different plans. One of the plans takes care of quarter inch and up, other plan takes care of half inch and up, okay? There's two different plans listed there. Keep turning.
I can't turn the pages. I wish you printed this file off.
There you go. There's your two plans right there.
Yeah.
What is there, about six hundred dollars difference in the two?
Yeah.
Something like that.
Okay. Uh, so I just, I throw that out there if you're interested in.
Well, what does that do to the stability of, of the concrete? I mean, because if that's bucked up, then that means that there's soil coming up close to.
Tree root bushes.
Yeah.
Oh, this, this is over here. There's no trees over on this side.
Oh, wow, that's true. There isn't.
But it's, it's just like this. If there was a, a half inch, then they just go in there and they cut that down right there. Well, you're only going back maybe, I don't know, one and twelve. You go back six inches, as far back as that cut would go.
Did you say that slope also was ADA compliant?
Well, yeah, I mean, all of your handicap ramps and everything are one and twelve. And so, you know, it's not like it's creating a, a jump or anything like that. It's creating a smooth transition.
What's the city's liability if somebody trips?
Yeah, yeah. It's a testing of our insurance is what it is, you know? That's the worst thing. It is a safety.
So the city's liable?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Where are those spots again?
They're all over.
So it looks like.
You better be, you better be injured pretty good for it. Because we've got some tuck insurance, some tuckers.
So one, one option does everything. One option does.
Half inch and.
The, the worst offenders.
Yeah. But if you notice, they charge different rates too.
Well, yeah, for six hundred dollars more, they're just going to fix it off.
Yeah, that's the whole goal. This was fifteen, fifteen dollars a foot. This is twenty dollars a foot. We want you to take the fifteen dollar a foot because that gives us six hundred dollars more. Because, and taking out a quarter inch, you only go back about three inches. You know, the cut would only be three inches. It wouldn't take them anytime long to shave that off. So I just don't, I don't know if you're interested in it. I'll contact her and, you know, we'll set up.
Well, we want to make, make it available for easy walking in Hartford. I for one, coming out of Capers, every time I walk out of there, I'm like.
Oh, that, that sounds great.
That was bad from there to where that.
It was.
There's no comparison of cost price if you're talking about placing. Whenever the first project for sidewalk, the number was unreal.
Yeah.
And then we had to down that.
Well, tell me something, why did the, why did we put those rails up here at Clay and Union? That has been a sore spot with me. I mean, they put handicap rails and there's no sidewalk.
Yeah, but that's, that was part of the project. It was Safe Schools project and that was probably, I don't know. But I'm saying it's probably part of the conditions of that project, you know? That there'll be some rails, I think, down here once we finish it. Well, we're not doing this side of the street. I was trying to think if they had some, in the initial plans for the sidewalk project, if they had anything on this side of the street, which they did. There were supposed to be some rails right there, uh, by Kathy Allen's, still we're on Union Street, you know? There were some rails on that sidewalk. It's just safety factor.
It's ADA. Those are ten thousand.
Well, I ain't just so glad since there's no place for them to go. I mean, it, it makes sense to me.
But if you notice all of our crossings that were part of that project, when you come down to enter the street, they've got those.
Yeah, the, the.
Those bubble strips, you know, that tell a blind person, you know, that you're.
Right.
Leaving the sidewalk.
Until he starts up Clay Street there by those handicaps and it doesn't tell him anything. I, I've never understood that.
Okay.
It looks nice though, doesn't it?
No, it looks tacky.
Oh, they're well-built.
Oh, well, I had to make that into consideration.
Okay. Let me write along, work back to this issue. Would you like to pursue this or you just wanted to save these?
Is this not something that men working for the city can't do?
We don't have those saws. What, what they do over here, what's been done around the courthouse is like, uh, there's a place over there that was about two inches. And they took, uh.
Can't grind it off?
Well, they took blacktop, you know, like you feel a patch in your driveway. They took blacktop, blacktop patch and put in there.
And tried to smooth it out.
Maybe smooth, you know, you're not going to stub your toe on it. You might, uh.
Break an ankle, but.
But that's not our, that's not our sidewalk. That's, that's county sidewalk, so they can do whatever they want to.
And this would cover just the rest of the downtown area that?
It covered, yeah, it'll cover Main Street, Center Street, one place on Apple Alley. This right here in front of the City Hall was part of the original project to be replaced all the way down to Clay Street.
Yeah.
And they were going to put in a sidewalk along Walnut Street up here all the way down to Clay Street. And that'll be a secondary project that we'll tackle, you know, in a year or two.
Okay.
We'll go ahead and finish that initial project, but.
Yeah, we did have a complaint during the Christmas festival of sidewalk. You remember an individual was complaining about the problem with the sidewalk down there.
Oh, I didn't pay attention to them, okay.
What about that?
Sidewalk on Union Street next to Kathy Allen. Next to Kathy Allen on, uh, Union Street. Is we going to do anything to that?
Uh, don't believe it's in this project here. They did, they tackled the worst-looking places, I think.
Well, that's pretty bad up through there.
Okay. We might, uh, approach her about, uh, see if we can add that to it.
When you get on up there behind the Methodist Church, part of that wall fell down and it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I started saying, what are you going to do about those walls like that?
Well, see, that was part of the original sidewalk project was to get, not, get both sides of Union Street, which meant that that retaining wall behind the Methodist Church, that whole block, that, all that was going to be replaced.
Well, what about up there, um, Perry and Colleen's house?
Yeah.
It's falling over too.
Yeah, all that, all that.
Does the landowner not have any responsibility in that?
Do what now?
Does the landowner not have any responsibility in those retaining walls like that?
I don't know. You'd have to ask a lawyer. I'm not sure what.
Well, I don't think they cut down the notch out of these bank there to put the sidewalk in. I'd say the city or somebody paid for that when it was put in.
Yeah, I'm not sure if that's, if those retaining walls are ours or theirs.
I don't know.
I'd have to see. Uh, do you want to pursue this or?
Where's this company?
For, I'm not sure. I don't remember. It doesn't say it's their.
I'm sorry.
I was looking for their address. Got their phone number and everything up here, but, uh.
I don't think it's too poor, like Hopkins Field or something like that.
Yeah, I believe that's part of it, was Hopkins Field.
I mean, I think it's a good idea to probably address it, but there might be a local company that we could patron.
Uh, I mean, you probably get a local company to do some grinding. I don't know if there's anybody else that does the sawing, you know, like that. I've not had anybody approach me about it. And usually I get approached about a lot of things. I mean, from other companies, you know, we want to say this, we want to say that.
Yeah. I don't have a problem with it. I mean, I'm.
Yeah, I think we need to start keeping replacing them or anything else.
Well, this is infrastructure. We could all, you know, take the money out of the special tax like we used to do with these kind of situations.
And what was the price of doing that?
Thirty-nine something.
Thirty-nine, ninety-three.
Yeah, thirty-four seventy-five cents.
Yeah, I was presuming that was the one y'all wanted to do was to, the more expensive one.
Oh, yeah.
It wasn't.
Because it, it takes in all the quarter inch cracks as well.
Yeah, I think we were due it.
Yeah. Well, do I have a motion then?
I make a motion that we grind all the rough places in the sidewalk out.
The ones that they've suggested?
Yeah, one they suggested.
I'll talk to her about, I think it's just when I hear when they're talking about, option A is what you're talking about.
Option A?
Option A, that's the, that's the one that does the quarter inch up to two inches.
Yeah.
I'll second it.
Okay. Any more discussion? All right, all in favor? Okay, thank you. All right, I think that's the last thing I've got, so if y'all have anything you'd like to bring up down?
We need these back.
No, not really.
You brought up an interesting topic earlier. We'll, we'll spend a lot of time on this. We can wrap it up.
Building that, that, that up from the get-go.
But when we talk about buying a new truck.
Want, yeah.
Do we have a, which made me think, what is our maintenance plan for our rolling stock for the city?
We roll them till the wheels fall off. And then we look for something used with loading.
So I didn't know if there was a, something like a policy that they.
Well, the fire, the fire department, the fire department just got a new pickup truck. They went from a quarter ton to a three quarter, I mean, half ton to a three-quarter ton. Because the trailer they were trying to pull with the rush truck just wouldn't, it wasn't, it was tail wagging the dog.
Right.
So we went through that. The police department is going to ask for, we've tried, excuse me, we've tried to replace a cruiser every other year, okay? Uh, brand-new police cruisers, we can get somewhere in the thirty-four thousand dollar range, okay? We buy, you know, through state of it. They're going to ask for one to be included in this next year's budget, which is something, I think, very reasonable. The other trucks, like the, the water trucks, you know, the collection and distribution trucks, they're really not in bad shape. Uh, we've got one that's losing a little oil. We have to, he keeps an eye on, on that oil level. He knows it's going to lose some. But everything we've bought for them's always been, been a used truck, you know?
Wow, you heard the term, drive it like you stole it instead of drive it like you own it.
Yeah.
That's, that's my, that's where I'm driving towards.
Yeah, okay. We have a utility truck that's probably our worst truck right now. They only take it out whenever we've got a leak. It's got all the leak equipment on it. Uh, these pickup trucks that we drive, they don't, they've got a few things on them, but the main utility truck. Uh, so sometimes we go to get in it, the battery's dead or something like that, you know?
Well, the whole point, you'll take your equipment and take care of you, so kind of, if we keep up on the.
Yeah.
PMs on it and, of course, they last longer, so. I didn't know what the oversight was for that kind of thing as well. I know we talked a lot about the water oversight. Rolling stock is a huge expense as well.
Yeah. Um, if we find a good buy sometimes on a truck, you know, used pickup truck, uh, we bought one from Jeff Killman, that red pickup truck.
And also Brent's Cruiser.
Brent's Cruiser.
I remember we bought, it was not new. We bought it from someone else.
Yeah.
It was like.
They usually try to keep their eyes out for things, don't they?
Yeah.
Here, but.
I was just wondering about keeping up with the maintenance of them, how we track that stuff.
Well, we do, we do our own maintenance. Jason does all of our maintenance on it. A lot of our maintenance on fire trucks, you know, so we do that in-house.
It's just a question I had. Ain't nothing.
Yeah, we do that in-house. But, uh, these are getting some miles on them. Of course, they're just driven right around here. We don't take them out of town. And, uh, you know, one breaks down, it's not very far away from rescue, so.
That's true.
But the, the worst truck I think that we've got right now is probably the utility truck. They, they had a utility truck down here in front of Paxton Ball for sale for a while. It was a white, had the, you know.
Tool boxes and everything.
Apartments on the side, things like that. It's about like what we've got up here, except, you know, of course, it's new. And I thought about trying to see what they wanted for that, but, uh, uh, I don't know, pinching as many pennies as I can, so I'll wait till something falls apart for reserve. We've got, we've got quite a few trucks that we, pickup trucks. We've got, we've got quite a few trucks that we, pickup trucks, what is it, about six or so? Count water and maintenance. I don't know, we're, we're in at probably a half dozen trucks is what we've got, so...
I know we had quite a few, because I usually pass about three going from my house to work.
I live three blocks away.
That's the same one going around the block.
There are people riding there waving dents.
Yeah.
Okay. Do y'all have anything that y'all want to bring forward to the council? Anything else?
What was that deal, Alan Madoff wanted to get the city's building?
Well, what we, rather than us taking it and then having to deal with its condition, we're trying to find somebody to take it off. We'll act as a middleman and try to, uh, we've shown it to two different people, and they thought it was gonna cost too much to...
That's why if there you know something wrong, our Alan Maddox, I'm gonna give you nothing.
Well, of course, he hadn't used it for years, but, uh, the roof, it needs a new roof on it, yeah, a little here on Center Street. Uh, it needs a new roof. Uh, the back office is, is so leaky, it's probably got grass growing in it, or something like that. It's not grass, it's maybe moss or something like that. It would have to be remodeled, because it's got a lot of walls in it that would need to be, if you were gonna make it into a eating establishment or something like that, you'd have to knock the walls out. I mean, it's...
Probably a blank end.
They, he thought it was about three thousand square feet. I may be counting the base, but I think it probably, the upper floor, what's really usable is probably about fifteen hundred square feet.
Is that where Walter Cadeena's office was, or is that the building next to it?
Uh, I think it's where Walter's was. It's got that brick front, it's got those little windows up here that runs like this.
Yeah.
I mean, it's a good location. Uh, it's got a basement under it. He's got some things stored there.
Is that basement dry?
Uh, haven't been in it, that's what he told me. We're going to, uh, next week, put an ad in the paper that we're going to publish the length of taxpayers', um, putting that ad in next week, and then we'll actually put the actual listing of the people the following week. And we have to do it for like three weeks. Either, there's two different ways of doing it. We, we can either put a small ad there and say we're gonna do it, and in the next three weeks do it, or we put a half-page ad in that says we're going to publish this, the length of payers' taxes, and then we print it one week, but then we have to put it on the internet, and we have to update it weekly for how long, I don't remember how long it is. Anyway, we decided it'd be easier for us, cheaper probably, in the long run, put a small ad next week, run the other one in three weeks, uh, make adjustments as people pay. We call people and remind them that they have paid. Some people just overlook it, forget it. Some people, a lot of people are waiting for their tax returns. That's why we're waiting so late to do this right now, to get people to file their taxes, give them a chance to file their taxes and get their returns back from the IRS. I don't know of anything else to tell you, so if y'all don't have anything, I'll entertain a motion with adjourn.
I'll make the motion with adjourn.
Okay, second.
Second.
All in favor? Any discussion? All in favor, okay. Thank you, y'all. This will be a lengthy meeting, but we got through a whole lot tonight.